So good evening, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order for March 6, 2019, and our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from February 6, 2019.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Three of us.
Yep, I will not be abstaining.
You can vote.
I can vote.
You can vote.
Right, how do you vote, Nicole?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yep. Pass unanimous?
Are we expecting Don?
I don't know, I didn't hear any communication from him. Next item's public comment, we do not have any public comment, I don't see anybody last minute public commenting, so move on to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent DeBoer?
All right, good evening, I want to remind everyone that in this Friday's Mashpee Enterprise, there will be an article that summarizes a lot of the things I'll be highlighting tonight, I also want to emphasize to those who are watching us that we have our anti-vaping poster contest, and the due date is March 15th, so it's fast approaching, and we really encourage everyone to make an effort to participate and send an important message that we'll be able to then share with all of our students, so anti-vaping poster contest. We have the administrator reports, we have the Coombs School Report from Principal LaBelle, 406 students, we would like to thank the U.S. Coast Guard for their visits to the Coombs classrooms, thank you to Carrie Thurston, she's a consultant who has been presenting and supporting and coaching teachers in the literacy area, thanks to Jason Lefebvre?
Lefebvre.
Lefebvre, he's an author of Too Much Glue, and he came to the second grade classes, I think, and really did great presentations in inspiring them to write, and thank you to Kristin Daly, the PE teacher at Coombs for organizing the Kids' Heart Challenge, and just a reminder that Thursday night is the Dr. Seuss Family Night at 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 7:30, I believe, and also thank you to Assistant Principal Scott Shepherd, Shawnee Turner, and Eleanor Jackson for last week's Wampanoag Celebration Week, which focused on community, so that was very good. Any questions on this report?
No, thank you.
We have the Quashtet School Report from Principal O'Brien, 502 students in attendance, and she is highlighting and thankful for the STEAM night that happened on February 28th, it was very well attended, very numerous engaging activities, and special guests that were welcomed, and part of the event National Grid, Massachusetts Autobahn Society, NOAA, Mashpee Middle High School, and Cape Cod Learning Tours, and thank you to Mrs. Wooden, Mrs. Blunt, and Ms. Abchess for organizing the event, as well as many, many teachers who participated, and the egg container event was sort of brought to a 2.0 level this year, it wasn't just dropping it and seeing how it landed, you had to throw it through a, like a hula hoop thing, you had to hit it with a bat, hit it with a hockey puck, throw it through the basketball hoop, there was a lot you had to do, and what was it, 80% of the designs protected the eggs, so that was pretty good, problem solving. And then in collaboration with Woods Hole Black History Month, and Dr. Larry Alade, Quashtet School 5th and 6th graders enjoyed a presentation from storyteller and Grammy Award nominee Sharon Kennedy, Ms. Kennedy shares stories and pictures of her travels to Ghana and Burkina Faso, probably not saying that right, and that Principal O'Brien looks forward to building an ongoing relationship with the Woods Hole Black History Month Committee and expanding the program for all grades in the future. Any questions? We have the Mashpee Middle High School Report from Principal Balistrachi, 253 students in the middle school, 467 students 9 through 12, 720 in total, congratulations to Senior Shayla Alves on a successful Dancing for a Cure event on February 2nd, that event helped to raise money for breast cancer and ovarian cancer awareness, and thank you to Celeste Reynolds, who served as Shayla's advisor, thank you to Mandarin teacher Grace Wang and World Languages Department Head Tim Rumberger for facilitating a trip for Mandarin students to the Peabody Essex Museum to view the Empress of the Forbidden City exhibit, and thank you to Ms. Amanda Howe, Colleen Terrell, and Suzy Brooks for taking students to the Metrohacks Women Hackathon event in Cambridge, it was obviously all females who went, our students were able to participate in a variety of experiences with use of technology and won first prize for the anti-vaping piece, I think what was surprising is that it was very hands-on problem solving, and they didn't know ahead of time that they were going to be given a challenge or had to come up with their own ideas, so, you know, in a short amount of time, they really worked well together and we're recognized for that. And then recognizing that on the 13th, MMHS hosted its Second Annual Career Falcon Career Fair, and the way it was structured, the students had the ability or option to attend two breakout sessions of their choice, and then that was followed by an opportunity to visit professionals in the gymnasium who were organized in career clusters, so that was a successful event. Any questions? We have Dr. Curley's Special Ed Report, and I do want to highlight that Think Kids, so through a grant that NAMI, which is the National Alliance of Mental Illness, received from the Tower Foundation, which we are very familiar with, they were able to provide Think Kids training to various districts, so the 25th, 26th, and the morning of the 27th of February, about 25 staff members from Mashpee participated in the Tier One Training for Think Kids, which is an approach for problem solving with students, that it really uses a good empathetic approach and conversational approach with students, and I know that Dr. Curley has already been trained at the Tier Two level, she's one ahead of all of us, she's our scout, and that we will be, the same 25 will be trained again in the fall, and then we're hoping to expand it, it was really, really excellent training. And there are 206 to 7 students currently on IEPs. And then on Athletic Director Matt Traveri's report, I just want to highlight the bottom section, the girls' basketball team qualified for the MIA tournament for the first time in the past 10 years, and they won their first game, and then that was a home game, and the second game, which was a very exciting intense game, they only lost by one point, but it was very exciting, and it's a young team, so they'll be, they have a pretty promising future. The athletic director raised over 1,500 for Chris Perkins Fund, that was on a boys' basketball game, gymnastics qualified for sectionals for the fifth time in the last six years, Mashpee senior Xavier Gonzo signed his national letter of intent to play football for UMass Amherst, senior Cameron Kergo jumped high jump to 6.7 to tie the best mark in Massachusetts this winter, and junior Ashley Kelleher broke the girls' basketball career scoring record. So totally, we have 1,628 students currently attending Mashpee Schools.
Patty, can I, when you were going through the school reports, I forgot to say that I was at the career fair at the high school, and, you know, granted, I mostly attend elementary events these days, but I was really impressed with, I sort of attended the opening plenary, and it was, you could have heard a pin drop in that auditorium, all the juniors and seniors were sitting in that auditorium, and Principal Balistrachi was talking to them, and it was like the most respectful group of young adults I had ever witnessed, I was like, wow, were they like threatened on their way in? Yeah, and I think I mentioned it to you, but the alum that spoke, Alex Clark, is that his? Yeah, was so engaging, and it was really cool, I think, to have an alum speak to the kids, because it wasn't about like, you know, look at this great big, you know, what I'm doing, it was more about like, let me tell you how I got there, and it was a really cool, I just thought there was something in it for everybody, and so I just wanted to say thanks for including me, but also it was just really gratifying to see how great our kids are, you know, so.
That was great to share. In the personnel update, Linda Burke, who was the Executive Administrative Assistant, actually it's not guided, it's Special Education, that was Dr. Curley's Administrative Assistant, she resigned, she moved further up towards Boston, and so that position, I believe, will show up in the March report as we fill, and same with the Quashtet Special Education teacher, that position was just filled yesterday, so that will show up in March.
Was that internally filled, both of those? I said a curiosity.
Yes, to be Special Ed and Executive Administrative Assistant, no to be Guided Teacher.
So there's going to be another Administrative Assistant position, next?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a ripple.
Got it.
Okay, next in your packet, you have an update of our partnership with the tribe, and you probably focus on the blue section down below, which is what we have done so far this school year, if you don't know, do you want me to get some people at home in here? I suppose I would try.
I mean, if you have any highlights, I mean.
Well, one of the things I wanted to point out was that we are having, you know, we have a PD Day next Friday on its trauma-informed practices, and we have reached out to the tribe to invite any members of their staff or education department to attend as well, and.
What is the first staff, is that scheduled?
Oh, yes, they offered the course last year on sort of cultural-based education focusing on the Wampanoag, and that was very well attended, but at a later time, that accommodated elementary, so this year we are offering a 10-week session that is more conducive to a high school teacher's schedule, and that is, you'll see, it starts in April from 2:30 to 3:30, and that is Jen Weston and Atana Hicks are the presenters for that, that's, if any of you ever want to stop into any of those sessions, they're really good, so if you're around, you can pop in.
Does this reside somewhere?
This document?
That the public can?
It's in the packet, I got it from the website.
But it's not, it's not out there.
Got it. I saw if you want to post it somewhere and let everyone know where it's at, so they can look at the details, if that's what you're interested in, yeah?
For the course?
Oh, no, I'm talking about this document, right here.
No, this would be a good thing to put on the website, and I do want to point out that our next partnership meeting is March 18th, and although there is our set of regulars who attend, it is open to anyone who would like to attend, it's open to other faculty, if there's members of the community who want to stop in, so it's March 18th, 4:15 to 5:15 here at the Quashtet Library, that's on Monday.
I was just looking at the ones in blue, and I think we should be a little more explicit, I had this question when they offered a science camp or something over February break, I think if something's being offered for tribal members' children, we should say that, if it's being offered for all children, because I'm looking at this, that they've agreed to provide before-school childcare for pre-K through 6 at the government center, I think that's just for tribal members, but if it's not, I would love to know.
I believe it is just.
Yeah, so we should make sure that we clarify those things before making them more public. This is great, it's quite a list.
Yes.
And then, I think one of the things that Patty and I were speaking about yesterday is, you know, we just had, they just had an election for tribal councils, so in June when we meet there, there will be some new faces, and we may be new faces to some of those folks too, so we're trying to maybe do some sort of mixer beforehand, like we did the very first time, or?
So we did reach out today, and Gail and Trish Kellenui, it's all set, 5 o'clock, and both, you know, everybody wants to do some refreshments and have an opportunity to meet and greet.
Perfect.
So 5, but we're starting the meeting at 5:30?
Okay.
Did you request oysters?
I will. Okay, and so then the last thing, which I think is a question?
Yeah, so this is my thing, so I was approached by, actually several people over the last three weeks, I mean, not a huge influx of negativity, but asking questions about what our philosophy was as a district for, not necessarily inclement weather, but any time we're going to cancel school, and I thought it'd be interesting to talk about it.
So the philosophy is student safety first, and I do it with a great deal of care, in any situation that is questionable, whether it's going to be a delay or cancellation, I always talk with all of the Cape superintendents the night before, in the morning, we have a text group, I always talk to Captain Laurent the night before, in the morning, so 4:00 in the morning, when I text her, she texts me right back, she'll tell me if the trucks are out, she'll tell me if the high schools been plowed, the buses are able to get out, and all of those things, I also, in certain situations in the past, I have checked with police and fire, depending on what the situation was, and then through the superintendent's listserv, I now receive, I think it's from NOAA, it's out of Norton, but it says BOX, I meant to look that up.
That's our code for the weather station, yeah.
So those come throughout the day, whenever there's anything challenging, and they're very accurate about what's happening, the hard part is that I don't always go with whatever the towns do, because Born, we'll talk about, they have to deal with the bridges, Sandwich has low areas with flooding, everybody doesn't have a fabulous DPW that we have, really puts, you know, safety and the conditions of travel in forefront, so.
And this isn't a finger pointing exercise?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I mean.
In hindsight, it's easy, right?
We always do, always in student safety first, I do value every school day, I will discuss that, I've talked about it with high school kids, when they're like, what was up with the day last Thursday, and I'm like, well, and so they plead their case, and I then defend my decision, and we're all good, but absolutely student safety, I don't, I mean, do I think everybody wants a snow day, absolutely they want a snow day, one snow day a year, but it's just not an arbitrary, let's have a snow day, as much as culturally and psychologically people want one. Hopefully maybe in March, but in June, we'll be happy to have one.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other input on that, or anything?
No, only that the report that you get from the Norton Weather Forecast Office is posted on their website and available to anyone, so that that decision support tool is like public, they just send it out to, you know, all the emergency managers and things like that, when we have an event on a little bit more regular basis, but every six hours, you get an updated forecast.
But I also want to reiterate that it wasn't a, this is, I know that we, as a collective group, have nothing to do with that decision, but we have.
No, we do not.
In, I think, four years, we've never discussed it at a school committee meeting, so I thought it'd be interesting to see what your take was on it.
Some people, out in TV land, feel that I put the working parent above our students, and I do not, so step aside that.
I, okay, I don't want to give air to that allegation, I'm not sure I understand that, but.
I don't think I do either, actually.
I always assume it's about the students first.
Absolutely, it is absolutely about students.
Very awesome. We don't need to spend any more time on that, I don't believe. Anything else?
I do not have anything else.
Thank you so much. So the next item on the agenda is the report of the business manager, Mr. Funk, sir, way down there at the table. Would you guys move over here?
Thank you, appreciate it. No, I'm good. As we move along, you know, we're into March, we're short timing it, as they say, for the rest of the year, so everything looks fine for closing out. We had our discussions on the budget to actual, I will entertain any questions as far as the budget to actual go, and then we'll get into the grants and et cetera, or if you have any general questions.
Why does it say FY '18 year-to-date expenditure?
That was last year, when this was developed, they wanted to see what we spent last year on each of the line items, so you can see, the year-to-date expenditure last year, which was the total expended on the first line was 86,901, this year, we're looking at 8,95071.
But our expenditures for now are 5,40?
That is correct, year-to-date.
Okay, all right.
The balance is 3,5508.
Okay, thank you.
And then, you know, there's also that offset, which we will start to get into pretty much, pretty shortly, but I think, we're pretty good, I'm very pleased with the way that's gone. But if there's something specific you want to add, please don't hesitate.
Did we already discuss the district curriculum instruction and technology deficit? Minus $341,000? At a previous point, I just want to make sure I'm not double tapping something we already discussed, but I don't remember us having a large deficit like this for curriculum instruction and technology.
That's where we'll be backing out.
Oh, that's right, I got, okay, we did talk about it, okay. Yep, understood, thank you.
And similar question, I feel, I have a sense of deja vu when I'm asking this, but on 25 of the packet, the maintenance for the buildings? Oh, never mind, I'm looking at the, okay.
No, no, no.
No, it's just messing with me that that 2018, it's just messing with me that 2018 is first there, because I was thinking of this year.
But there is expenditures there, would you like me to address those?
Sure.
I'm just trying to help you out. There were two things that we had to, and again, these are Department of Ed rules and regs as far as the reporting, that we had to hook up electricity to the librarians.
Oh, yeah, the island.
Right, that's the 1752, and how many people like our new sign?
Oh, it's awesome.
That's an electric sign.
Yes.
It says so long.
Yeah.
There you go.
And that's for the year.
Those are the two answers.
I see.
That was for putting the line.
That was, you know, in other words, I couldn't put that in as part of the sign, because if you remember, the sign was developed in the previous fiscal year, and then we moved into this fiscal year.
Yeah, that is a good-looking sign, I've heard from a number of people.
I heard nothing but.
We had some kudos for putting up the Mashpee Substance Use Drop-In night on the sign last, yesterday.
Oh, cool.
Excellent.
Yeah.
It is quite the sign.
Welcome to the future.
Yep. Those are my stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I go home and play, just so I can see what's going on.
I'm going to have a good night.
It's all, yeah.
Have a good night, Paul, up there.
Yeah, exactly, drive safe, my friend.
I like flying under the radar.
Yes, I do.
All right, going on to the grants, again, the grants have dwindled down, you know, the federal grants, everything seems to be lining up, we've, I need with Special Ed Director Ronnie Spent, 94142, everything seems to be on track, I don't see really any problems in fiscal for this year. Revolving accounts, on page 37, most of them don't change, school to career, those are just expenses that were paid out, athletic gate receipts, those, some of that is, not in this one, but you'll see another one next month, I think those were, we bought mats in the high school, I want to say chili mats, and we took them out of there because it's a combined, not aerobics.
Gymnastics.
Gymnastics, thank you, where it's a combined, rather than take it out of the appropriation to put out of it.
You're gating yourself with the word aerobics.
Aerobics.
Yeah.
Leg warmers, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I was just going to say something, we'll talk about it probably tomorrow morning, right, tomorrow, 11, are we still having a meeting tomorrow?
What's that?
I said we have a meeting tomorrow morning for the working group, and I would like that at some point, and just full disclosure to the rest of the committee, that we can discuss maybe how much money we want to carry in athletic gate receipts and stuff like that, month to month, has that been discussed before, has that already discussed or covered anywhere policy-wise?
Not really, not really, yeah, that would be something that should be discussed in, you know, right, I think that should be first discussed, and then working.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, okay. Soliciting any discussion.
Then on page 38, you have your school choice expenditures.
Can I have one more question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, this is on the school choice, no, sir, next page, on the school choice.
Oh, yeah.
Can we, is it possible, and again, we can discuss this more detail tomorrow, but can we start encumbering our next, sorry, the next budget cycle, 580, $587,000 in school choice in here, so it doesn't look like we have a million dollars in the school choice account?
That's all, that's all, it's just, you know, the numbers.
It's just perceptions, because people see that, and immediately they think we have a million dollars, and we don't.
No, because we're going to, out of that million dollars, we still have to back out this year.
Right, and I think that should be 100% clear.
We have to leave the floor that we have, that we had an agreement upon, and then, yeah, we can take all of those out, because I can pull them all out, what will happen is, it'll end up a deficit until we.
Well, that's fine, yeah, no, that's exactly how it should look, because this is already spent.
So we can talk about that tomorrow, and I can have it for the next year.
Yeah, absolutely, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure somebody was looking at that number this week.
Oh, I bet so.
Oh, I'm sure they'll question it.
Which is fine, and we all know what it really should be, and we can explain it, but why not just make it visible?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good point.
And of course, of course, the way we're approaching this, first this year, because we'll be backing out those figures at the end of the year, we'll have a discussion on that, too.
Okay, and it's 355 something this year, right, in change?
355, 411.
And then next year is 5?
538,000.
538, okay, okay.
And the last one, again, these are just, and I'm going to have, this is something I'm going to bring to the, to the working group tomorrow about transfers, just so you can kind of.
Okay.
I'm not going to discuss it anymore tonight, but I do need a vote on this, and all this is to take care of the deficit, and I've kind of, I'll bring it to the working group tomorrow, and then we'll bring it out.
Okay, move to approve budget transfer in 1904.
A second.
Any discussion? Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, approve unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. So the next items on the agenda are specifically assigned or unfinished business, and the first thing is the FY '20 and FY '21 school year calendars, in page 40 to 42 of your packet.
So you have two drafts for FY '20, you have one that says draft two, and one that says just draft, the reason they're both in here was several of the districts on the Cape are doing a two-week Christmas break for next year, and those that are doing the two weeks are Barnstable, Cape Cod Tech, Falmouth, Nantucket, and Sandwich, Truro, and Upper Cape Tech, those that are returning on January 2nd, similar to us, Born, DY, Mashpee, Monomoy, and Nossett, so I'm just bringing that to your attention, I personally prefer the first draft, where the students come back on January 2nd, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and since we hadn't voted on the calendar yet, you wouldn't be able to.
So that would only provide us with two?
Two days.
Two days of school to absorb into the winter, if we did a two-week?
Yeah, so if we did the two-week, our last day of school would be June 19th, this is on draft two.
Wait, what?
So draft two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the 26, with five school, it's snow days, I got it, I'm sorry, okay.
You're right, right, with five snow days, so the 19th, with those snow days.
So, if you don't mind me asking, so why would you like draft one better, it looks like it only changes the end of the school day, school year by, what, two days?
Yeah.
By doing two weeks of December?
Because you're just.
Right, but I personally like getting back, you know, a two-day start back after having been off for break is a good ease in for kids, which is my preference either, but ultimately, you're voting on the calendar, so I don't know what.
Oh, you mean that in January?
Yeah.
The two-day ease in after the break?
Right, so you have, you have three days off, and then you come back for two, which helps you ease you back into the.
So my, when I was looking at this, because I was kind of confused, too, one thing that bugs me a little bit about coming back for those two days, I mentioned this to you, is that now that we have this chronic absenteeism score, you know, it's quite possible that families will opt to, because it's only two days, to just stay out, you know, and we might have a lot of absences on those days, but then, conversely, we might, you know, we gain those in January, but then if our last day of school is the 19th, and we end up having a snow day or something, and it extends into the following week, we might get those absences then instead, so I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it makes a difference, but.
I think where Christmas falls on the, it's a Wednesday, so you really finish school on the 20th, you have a good four days before Christmas, which is nice, because it's not always like that, to really feel like you've gotten, you know, ready for the season and into it, so.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, I see what you mean, as opposed to like coming in on Monday and then going out on Christmas Eve, yeah.
Right, because if you look at the following year, the 2021 draft is not, you do get all the way off until January 4th, but you also are going to school until December 23rd.
And why? And why, why is there not a discussion about a week off for Thanksgiving instead of changing Christmas? The same two days on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth? I was curious if you had a reason.
We just never have, I don't know if any other districts on the Cape do.
Unprecedented.
I, I'm good with being out of the box, I am.
So you have seen this calendar before, the only difference we're drawing in the draft to, to show you the difference in that December.
Do we want to vote on this one when there's only three of us here?
How many times have we put this off, though?
They don't vote me again until April, starting to get a little.
We need to vote on it.
Okay, I'll move that we approved draft one for 2019, twenty, and as presented for 2021 on page forty-two. Maybe that's easier. I move we approved the calendar as stated on page forty and forty-two.
Do I have a second?
Uh, I'll, I'll second it.
Do you want, can we split those up, George, and do one at a time, please?
Um, can we, I revise my motion to deal with the 2019, 2020 year and approve the calendar as presented with the two twelve nineteen date.
Everybody understand that? Just making sure everybody understands that.
So we're approving the draft one.
So the motion is to approve draft one of the 2019, 2020 Mashpee Public Schools calendar? Second?
My second.
Any discussion?
I guess I think that the, I don't like making this decision at all, by the way. But I, yeah, but I think that because we, they are getting out on the twentieth, it does seem like quite a long stretch of time to keep them out until, till the, um.
The sixth.
The sixth, yeah, so I think that, for me, that's my rationale. I think that'll, that would be really challenging for parents to have their kids out for that long. They might forget how to go to school.
I mean, it does fall, it does fall much better than the last couple of years. And I'm, I'm perfectly acceptable with, with the superintendent's recommendation.
Yeah, I, I am as well. So I think I'm ready to vote.
George, nothing to say?
No, I'm fine.
All right.
I'm in the motion.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That passes unanimously.
And I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented for the 2021 school year as dated twelve five eighteen.
Do I have a second for that? Motion by George.
We, do we usually, I don't feel like we've ever done this.
Yeah, I'll second it for discussion, because my question, I'll second that for discussions. I'm, I'm just curious why we're, why we're approving the twenty, 2020 calendar this early? I don't normally remember doing that.
No, we haven't before, but in a conversation with the Cape Superintendent, several of the other districts do a two-year calendar.
Okay.
With two years at a time.
Well then, to be honest with you, if we're gonna be this far ahead for this, I think we need to have the full committee here to discuss it.
Asking you, don't.
Yeah, like, there he is. So if I, I'm gonna, the move, uh, motion went wrong?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, then I move to.
Postpone discussion.
Postpone discussion on the 2020, 2021 calendar until we have a full committee?
Second.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Any discussion? Trying to catch you up, Don, so we're doing, we approve the 2019, 2020 calendar, draft one.
Draft one? One I didn't like.
Coming back on the second.
What's that?
Where the kids will come back on January second.
That's not the one with the.
So we all voted yes on this, so anyone can move to reconsider if necessary. Don unfortunately cannot move to reconsider.
That's, that's fine.
That's good.
I'm not gonna bring that one back up.
You don't want to state your case?
Well, I, I think I stated it already and.
Are you gonna, were you gonna talk about the kids coming back before Labor Day?
Yes.
Do you want me to give you a little info on it? Notice that the next year they are.
I did notice that, yes.
So one of the reasons that you see the two PD days there on that draft calendar is the speaker that we have coming for our staff is Mark Brackett, who spoke at the MASSS MASC in Hyannis, he's really phenomenal. And we basically worked around the day he can come, which is the twenty-ninth. And so that, and he'll be doing that presentation as well as some PD on his ruler approach, and so that's kind of why we're sticking with that position.
So, so he's going to be here for the twenty-ninth?
Right, so we'll do like a short convocation in the morning of the twenty-seventh, and there'll be some staff meeting time on that day, it'll be a little bit different than normal, and then the twenty-ninth, the morning will be PD.
Okay.
We've only come back before Labor Day one time, correct? Like, the last four years?
Right, but we really.
And that was?
We had to get.
Yeah.
Challenges, but we don't have that anymore, and then in that next calendar, Labor Day's rather late, so it's all before Labor Day.
There was.
Wait a minute, are you talking about 2020?
Yeah, 2021. If you notice, Labor Day's the seventh of September.
Oh, okay.
We do have our kids coming back before that.
Technically, you do, yeah. But we have a motion on the table for the postponement. In a second.
Of, of the discussion on this.
Okay, that's fine.
Don?
Yes.
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 Yes, all right. Topic's postponed. Next on the agenda is discussion of the 2019, 2020 school committee meetings. I know we had some issue with.
George.
One of our august members unable to meet.
One of our well-traveled members.
Yes, 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 unable to meet four meetings, although I think it's not only one with the possible new dates.
But the possible new dates could be.
Conflicted with somebody else.
Oh, right, right, I'm, yeah, I'm opening it up for some discussion here, so I'm okay with any of these dates, so I'm opening it to the other three.
So if someone would please verify, but I thought when I looked at the calendar, November twenty-seventh is the day before Thanksgiving, because Thanksgiving's late.
Oh, really?
And if that's the case.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, concur.
Then I would suggest that that's probably not a workable date.
Wait, no, oh, October. Yeah, it is the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you're right.
November twenty-seventh, so I, I would suggest that we find a different date in November than that.
But you also have, MASSS MASC is in the first part of November.
I'd, I'd rather take, take, I'd rather take that than take the consequences of wanting to have a meeting the fourth Thanksgiving.
No, I mean, we, if we left it on the thirteenth.
If we left it on the thirteenth, we know that George can't make it, is that the issue?
We are not positive, but I have been invited back to make another tax presentation, or to make a tax presentation, I think it's that week, but I don't know for sure. About the twentieth, does anybody have a problem with that? November twentieth?
Somebody must, because I'm, I'm not sure why we wouldn't.
I don't have any issue with the twentieth.
I don't either.
Yeah, twentieth is fine for me.
Does that work for you guys?
I mean, these, these can all cha, always change if something comes up.
Mm-hmm.
That's a November twentieth.
Maybe that was a typo, maybe it was supposed to be the twentieth. Since none of us appear to have any conflicts, it would be weird that Gail.
That one's, we can fix that one, then that'll be the twentieth. So want to back up to the eleventh of September? Would you like to see? Eighteenth work for people?
September eighteen, probably. Yes, September eighteenth works, I'm not sure about the eleventh.
No, we do, because this is based on your input before.
That's right, eighteenth works. These, the seventeenth, eighteenth, the seventeenth of July and eighteenth of September work for me.
Okay, that's fine with me, too.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
This is easy, so we're going with the eighteenth of September, is that all right with you, Jeff?
Absolutely, I have no issues with those.
Okay.
Unfortunately, my stuff comes up much later than Georgia's.
All right, so back it up now, August fifteenth as the retreat.
Which we want to be the fourteenth?
Well, that's the other possibility.
Oh, I mean, I can do the fifteenth.
The only problem with that is that it's, we're moving off of Thursdays and normally, I'm sorry, moving to a Thursday as opposed to a normal committee night. I, I was foreseeing some, something conflicting that day, because I have a couple of meetings on Thursdays.
So we want to stick to the fourteenth, then that's a Wednesday?
But I don't have anything right now.
George, though, I think you were returning.
George can't make either one, so we need to take him out of the conversation, yeah.
So do you want to go, does everyone want to do the fourteenth, the Wednesday?
I'm, I'm good with either.
Yeah, that's fine, if that's.
Maybe remotely you can join us, George.
I'll be in Switzerland, probably.
Switzerland has internet, George.
They do have internet there.
You can be on top of the mountain, though. Okay, so we're gonna have the retreat on the fourteenth.
I'm learning how to yodel, yes.
Okay, so the last, okay, you are awesome, so the last one is the July twenty-fourth meeting, which I thought if we met, went to the seventeenth, that was good, chief, Nicole.
I mean, I'm fine on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, okay.
I'm fine with either one of those dates right now.
Okay, so, but George is not on the twenty-fourth. George, you wrote on your note, the twenty-fourth doesn't work, any other Friday in July works.
That's not a, that's not a Friday, though, is it?
Fourteenth, seventeenth, twenty-first of July, that, that week is out.
Are you able to tell us?
That could be tricky, I'm taking a group of grandparents and grandchildren around Boston, I don't know what the actual schedule is for that evening.
You don't include a school community tour in that?
Not, not necessarily.
Out there and get some civics.
So that July twenty-fourth will be the only meeting of July, correct?
Yeah.
Is our plan to do some committee love for the community picnic?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Skip some cream.
When is that, July fourth?
Well, we don't know yet.
Probably, could be the fifth, because it's a Friday.
No, it's the second, I have it down.
The second, okay.
The picnic is the second.
July second, Tuesday, four o'clock.
Tuesday.
Yeah, scoop. All right, so what, what have we got to consent, so George, you can't make either one of these dates?
July twenty-fourth of seventeen, if you're doing Wednesday, July third works.
No, that's.
The seventeenth, the seventeenth works. And then that's it, so.
Done on a cool seventeenth, Ken.
Does July seventeenth work for you, Nicole? Because last time I thought.
No.
It doesn't?
No, I thought that's what we established, is you were gonna lose one of us, I don't, I don't mean.
No, probably.
Carry on, carry on, that's, I'm.
You've done.
You can make it be the seventeenth.
For me, so, I mean.
I, I can do.
Are we gonna rochambeau to see who we miss then?
Well, I, it, nothing, I, I'm not certain that I won't be here, but we're planning to be gone that week, so. But I don't have, you know, a flight to Switzerland or anything like that already scheduled.
Do we want to, we're not gonna finalize this tonight, are we?
That's on the agenda for a vote.
But once, can we, can we, if you're always a bit, we can always amend it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I just think we can, we can proceed and.
We're just trying to get some business done.
Yeah.
All right.
So if I may do some active listening, so what I hear is that the dates are gonna be July seventeenth, August fourteenth, August twenty-first, September eighteenth, October sixteenth, November twentieth, and then as written.
Sounds right.
That everybody else has got? Any further issues with any of that?
I can arrange all of those. Move to approved as stated by the chair.
So, motion by, uh, motion by George, second by Don. Any discussion, further discussion?
Um, that, the retreat, is it always in the evening, too? Is that what I should be holding, or, I feel like we did it in the day at one time, no? It's always in the evening? Same time as our meeting, okay.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I have always asked it to be a non-business meeting time, but I've always lost, so. I just know that, I know that affects people that, you know, don't have as much flexibility as I do to move my schedule around.
Well, I'll just, I'll put it in for the evening, I just, I wondered if we had already decided that.
I'd be in favor of six o'clock, can you make it?
Six in, six AM?
Yeah.
Might that be fun, actually, get a nice big brunch going on?
Sun will be up by then.
You can't eat that early.
We can get a parking spot.
Yeah, there we go.
We can get a parking spot at the beach if we're there at six.
All right, we're losing focus quickly.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Unanimous. Seventy miles an hour, this is awesome. So the next thing we have on the agenda is implementation of the change in start times, page forty-four in the packet.
So you have two pages in the packet, forty-four and forty-five, that are pretty detailed. The first page lays out information related to students, and this is gonna be shared out as well. And then the bottom of the front page is the athletics, and then the second half is related to staff, school staff, and then custodial staff. I don't know which parts you would like me to go over. Do you want me to read it?
I mean, I would assume, I'm assuming there's changes from the last time that we had this discussion.
This is just sort of a consolidation after all the meetings and the plans in place. But this is how we see it all.
Well, the expectation's always gonna be due to our protocols, that everybody's already digested this entire document. Is there any questions on the stuff that the superintendent's presented for the implementation of the start times, or any concerns that she can discuss?
So the, the one que, the one question that I had was, I see here that now that we're pushing back the high school athletic times to start at three twenty?
Practices, uh-huh.
The practices? I had just, how long do the practices last? Are they two hours, three hours?
I'm sorry. How long do practices last for athletics, depends on the sport, but.
There is, generally under two hours.
Generally under two hours? That's the way it is currently? Okay. So that means the kids will be done by five thirty, home by roughly six o'clock under the new schedule versus today? Be home by five o'clock?
Well, it depends on, if you have a coach that's in the building, if the coach is not in the building, you know, when certain practices will begin. But they generally run about two hours or less, so football might go a little bit longer here, there. Certain days of the week are a little bit different, maybe game days, and you have light practices, heavy practices, but.
All right.
Um, what is the, it says home games are scheduled with four PM start times, what are they now, now?
Uh, I think they're, I don't know if they're earlier or later now, the, the away games, he has them all starting at four thirty, actually, I didn't bring that, I had last year's chart in my, I didn't bring that piece of paper. Do you know when home games?
Depends on the setting in school, some schools, if you look like in Norwell, they don't do any early releases of any kind, so they don't begin at four o'clock. It's almost five, three thirty, they're more local.
I do have that information, though, we went over every sport.
Can you just remind me how that works then for that last period of the day? Because they're getting, you're saying most of them are two fifty or late. Because they're getting... You're saying most of them are two-fifty or later? So that's going to impact that last period?
Well, so the day ends for students at two-fifty. So that won't be a problem, but the ones that are glitchy, so Abington and Cohasset, based on the chart that I received from the athletic director, would probably be leaving at two-thirty. So they would be missing, what, twenty minutes of the day? Hull would have to leave at two-fifteen, and Norwell and Rockland would be leaving at two-forty-five. The probably outlier to that, I would presume, is golf, because it's a slow sport and needs to stay light, so they tend to leave a little early, but we didn't have times for that. But I think for the most part, that looks pretty appealing in terms of minimal impact on classroom learning.
And I recall correctly, I thought that Matt had said that a number of these schools, that it's not a significant change from what we do now. In other words, even in our current school day, these are early departures. Because they are just, because we're in this league, and so they're not like new additions to early departures based on the change.
No, but some of the away games that currently start at four, they will now be starting at four-thirty. So that combination, because right now, kids leave sometimes an hour early.
Yeah.
Or in the way, some of those away distances. This is actually an improvement by getting the start of the game later.
So I think for us, as for kind of an administrative overview of what's going to be happening, this is helpful. But I don't think it's good as a communication tool.
I think it needs to be like a brochure. I can picture sort of a panel that would be going.
Or even like a slide deck, or something that sort of characterizes, sort of characterizes the changes. And maybe, maybe for school, for different schools, but more generally across the district or something. I think I was, had an appointment at eight AM in Falmouth today, and I'm never driving to Falmouth at that time, and I happened to be behind a bus all the way down Old Barnstable Road. And I thought, you know, when our bus schedule changes next year, people need to remember that the glitchy times are going to shift. And so I was just thinking about that generally and thought, you know, we have to do our diligence to communicate, you know, where we think some of the impacts are going to be. And certainly, while we already have rationales for the change, just beyond message in terms of, you know, why we're doing this and all that stuff. So I think, I'd like to see something that's more of a public communications tool. And certainly, we're going to have something for parents, I assume, that's, that's unique in and of itself as well, I guess.
And just to, once again, refresh my tired little mind, the programs by the Mashpee Rec Department at each of the schools, is there a cost to the parents?
There is.
There is? Okay.
The only one, so the Boys and Girls Club, it's part of your annual membership, which I believe is a hundred and ten dollars a year. So they wouldn't, you know, if you're already paying that, there's no impact there. If you choose to have your child go there in the morning.
They have some significant offset programs as well, I believe, for their annual membership.
Yeah.
Does the recess lunch change, times change at all? Is it currently twenty-five minutes, twenty-five minutes? Okay.
Do we need to vote on this?
No, just information.
This is just information. So, I hate to harp on it, how much is that going to cost parents?
I think, I bring that with me, but I thought it was eight dollars if you do the mornings and eleven dollars if you're doing the afternoon.
Yeah, for the rec department.
It's like nineteen a day.
Nineteen dollars a day.
For the rec department, which is limited to thirty-eight kids presently, I think. By capacity. And I think the morning, I'm not sure about the afternoon, what the afternoon limit is, but that's not a...
There's not excess capacity there.
Yeah, whereas Boys and Girls Club, they, they don't have like a magic number.
Well, they do at some point, but...
I don't think so. Based on experience.
I think Mayor Bradbury had said they had the capacity to, I mean, it could get additional license if they...
If they needed it.
If they were staffing, they could build a program. I don't know really what their target is, but...
I've just had in my hands our, from our discussion when you did the survey, and I don't, you happen to know those numbers offhand, the people who said they would use?
I do have it, but I don't have it on me.
So we have those numbers, too, if you recall. I think it was two meetings ago.
And that one's also need-based for programs, I believe, right? Financial need-based?
They do make adjustments, I believe.
And then, of course, the tribe didn't offer before care before or after, so that's a new addition for the town.
That's good.
Yeah. But I'm pretty sure that is just available to tribal members.
Anything left on page one? We had a question about the DPW. Was there any discussion about being able to adjust their schedule by a half hour?
They did adjust their schedule, but what do you mean, how much?
Later.
I think they normally come in right now, the day shift is six-thirty. I think they felt that's when they wanted to come in.
I don't think it's an issue, it's just interesting to swap out, to have the custodians doing their change out right in the middle of what's going to be almost dismissal, correct?
I know, but I think they can, there are certain areas of the building they could be working on.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
Change their order of business there.
Definitely don't want to get into the DPW weeds. Not yet.
Oh, I see, so that three-fifteen's the same for all the schools?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, and the next item on the agenda is going to be the Outreach Working Group 2019 Family Opinion Survey Update.
So what we have is electronically through Survey Monkey, there were three-hundred-and-sixty-nine completed surveys. And then as of today, the hard copies that went out over the break, we have ninety-two surveys returned. So that is where we're at.
What's that rate?
Slightly under, I think it was nine-sixty-nine that went out originally in Survey Monkey. I think there might have been a thousand and one households, but I think, I don't know how that compares with last year at this point. I feel like it's better.
Yeah, it is, I think.
Are you doing the math for me?
So we're already at forty-six percent, and last year, I think we were at forty-one at the end, so... And that's a little bit higher male surveys than we got last year. Just by numbers, I don't know about percentage, but... So is there...
We did send a nice flat this year.
I know. Very different envelope. Did we decide, is there a day when we're going to cut them? I remember at some point we...
Oh.
Stop.
Sort of called it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll put one more reminder in tomorrow's email, but I think we, probably a week more.
Yeah, I think maybe just to say, this is your final opportunity to provide input into programming, et cetera. And then, what did we discuss? By "we," I mean us, the board, we wanted to have presentation of results at what meeting?
Honestly, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Well, we only have one meeting in April, I believe.
So we're shooting for that meeting, more than likely, not May, because we'd have a...
There's two meetings in May.
That would be the reorg meeting, right?
Well, one of them, one of them.
Yeah, one of them.
Oh, we have two.
The first meeting might be a good time to record out.
Only because we have the NSBA meeting right before that.
Right before that.
That next...
I think we should go for the first meeting in May.
Okay. So that could give us a little more time to let some paper copies trickle in and...
So May the eighth?
May eighth.
I just want to put that on my to-do list.
That sounds good.
May eighth. So the, when's the, when's the election?
Twenty-first.
Oh, oh, okay. I just always assumed it was early. Okay, so we, what, can you refresh my memory, what days we have our...
Meetings in May?
Yeah.
We have one on the twenty-second.
Oh, okay.
And we have one on the eighth.
I apologize. I think it was, yeah.
No, it is the twenty-first, the election.
Yeah. I'd written something down here about the nineteenth, but...
Town meeting is on...
Town meeting is six.
Town meeting is six, FYI.
That's a year from now.
I think that's what I was thinking about, was town meeting, okay.
In two thousand and twenty, it's on the nineteenth.
All right, so we, so we're planning on the first Monday, the first May meeting for those results, okay. Thank you, sorry about the digression.
Any other questions about the family opinion survey? All right, thank you, Superintendent Barr. And one of my favorite agenda items, so Mashpee Middle High School Student Representative, Skylar Ripple, take it away.
Good evening. So tonight, right now, is the Mashpee Middle High School Talent Show, which is every year run by the sophomore class, so this year it's the class of twenty-twenty-one. And that includes all students from seventh to twelfth grade who want to be in it, and they have first, second, and third, so excited to see who wins the talent show tonight. The National Junior Honor Society is doing four officer-led service projects this year. So the president of our group is ninth grader Kalia Eaton, and she'll be doing a service project for Christopher's Haven, which is for children with cancer. Vice President Sam Mori will be doing a project for VNA Hospice. Secretary Megan Burnett will be doing a service project for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And the treasurer, which is myself, will be doing a project for Boston Children's Hospital. And all four of those are with ninth and eighth grade mixed service teams to help with organization and execution of the projects. The National Honor Society induction, so for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, is March twenty-eighth. They have twenty-eight new members, which is mostly sophomores, as the Junior Honor Society last year's ninth grade. But they're also inducting juniors and a couple seniors this year. The mattress sale is in the Mashpee Middle High School cafeteria to support the band and music programs, which is Sunday the tenth, from ten to five. They have posters and stands all around town, and in the past and at other schools, it's been a very successful fundraiser that not only helps the band and music programs, but individual students. The play, which is the Putnam County Spelling Bee, is March twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. Tickets are on sale at the main office right now, and that's going to be a great production by the Blue Falcon Theater Company. The tenth graders are taking MCAS at the end of the month, which is a really important MCAS and a really important milestone for them in their high school career. The AP and honors art classes had an art show last Saturday night at the Mashpee TV studio. And their displays are still showing from nine to five every day for the rest of the month, and there's art pieces for sale. Spring sports will be beginning on March eighteenth. Coaches and teams are ready for a new season to represent Mashpee's sportsmanship and community values. And in the same way, seniors are applying for community scholarship opportunities this month to help them and just to really be thankful for everything their community has given them. The Science and Engineering Fair is March sixteenth, but this is the regional version this time, so you had to be accepted to it, so that's a really great honor for all the students that are going. So a few Mashpee students will compete at Bridgewater State University. The Junior District Music Festival will be held at Attleboro High School this year, and that's a huge accomplishment for the younger students because you had to send in a video and audio recording, and then it had to get approved by people all around the state. So that's a really big accomplishment for them. It sets them up for more competitions in the future. The girls varsity basketball team did make history this year, which is a huge success for the program and lots of young players with bright futures. It was the first time girls varsity basketball has ever won a tournament game, and their first time making it to the second round, which is huge. So we are very thankful for the community involvement that we had in our tournament time and the support from our students and the faculty. The girls winter lacrosse team has been training very strong over the last few months for their upcoming season, especially bonding with the varsity team and pulling up new players that will most likely be on varsity from the junior varsity team last year. They're a great group of hard-working athletes training to once again qualify for state tournament in girls' lacrosse. The ninth grade English honors classes will be participating in reading Romeo and Juliet next week, and we will be doing a project called Breakout EDU, which is like an escape room, and it's an educational game platform that requires teamwork to better understand the book Romeo and Juliet. The Boys and Girls Club Keystone is a teen leadership organization made up of Mashpee High School student leaders, and they've all year hosted lots of events, uniting kid club teenagers together and training Mashpee teens to be confident leaders in a fun and comfortable environment. So they're having a lot of success this year. Mrs. Weeks, the high school librarian and a crew of students, have been helping people monthly at the public library, helping with technology, and students have been helping at the school for Southport residents. There is a robotics competition for the Mashpee robotics team on March sixteenth that unifies people who take robotics classes at school, as well as people who are in the robotics club after school. So it's both of those competing on weekends, and they've had multiple competitions this year, and they got really cool T-shirts. They're very excited to show Mashpee pride in a different way than we usually express. The music in our schools month concert is March fourteenth, which is band, strings, and choir from Quashna and Mashpee Middle High School. And that's just a really good community involvement night. It's a really strong opportunity for younger students to see what it's like to be up in the high school and the high schoolers to kind of reminisce on the progress that they've made over the years. And lastly, the National Junior Honor Society as a whole is doing Pennies for Patients, which is a homeroom competition fundraiser for the Lymphoma Society, which is for children with leukemia. So each homeroom has a box that their homeroom students are supposed to put money in, and whichever one raises the most money will get Olive Garden lunch one day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Skylar. Not sure how we can follow that, but we'll go to the next line item, which is new business.
Everything always seems silly.
I know, now it's, we're done now. So move on to new business, the next item on the agenda, and the first is tuition waivers for OP, K, MP... Oh, I'm sorry, that's grade K. Sorry, OP in grade K and MP in grade K.
And OP and MP are siblings, and they have recently had to move to Barnstable from Mashpee, and they are requesting to stay in Mashpee for the balance of the time in the garden here. They are hopeful to remain and, you know, find their way back to Mashpee next year.
A second.
I would, can we do, can we do, I guess it doesn't make any difference, but normally we do them separately. Yeah, good call. So we had a, sorry, a motion by George and a second by Nicole. Any discussion? Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Unanimous, all right. And the next thing is the grade twelve field trip to the Sky Zone in Providence, Rhode Island on June fourth, two thousand and nineteen, which is in, the request form is in page forty-six of the packet.
That's part of the senior week activities. They, it's something they do every year, so you have approved this for the years I've been here.
So moved to approve.
I don't know, this one's tough. Really tough. I might need to think about it for a second. All right, I'll... Did you second it?
No.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Motion by George, second by Don. Any discussion?
I can still vote against it.
Pardon?
I can still vote against it, even though I seconded it.
All right, if there's no discussion, how do you vote, Don?
Reluctantly, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Unanimous? And then the final new businesses discussion, and it's listed as a vote for our proposed two thousand and twenty school choice seats.
So you're really voting, you're really voting to remain in the school choice program?
Right.
Because, but you don't have to do that, but we're going to have you do that. You really just would vote if you wanted to leave the school. You really just would vote if you wanted to leave the school choice program, and you're not actually voting on the seats, you're, it's informational. You just need to re-vote, from my opinion, re-affirm that you want us to participate in school choice.
And that's a state requirement, that we need to do this vote?
You don't have to re-vote.
Okay.
You'll have to vote if we wanna.
You would only have to take a vote if you wanna not do school choice anymore. But it doesn't hurt to reaffirm it every year, but you don't have to.
I don't mind showing solidarity for the.
Yeah, we'll re-affirm that we will continue to participate in school choice.
Second.
So we get a motion by George, a second by Nicole, any discussion on school choice, remaining in school choice?
And it's only staying in the program, it's not specifying at what level, correct?
What level of seats?
Yes.
Right.
That's correct.
Correct.
It's only staying in the program, I'm fine, okay.
All right, if there's no discussion, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Passing unanimous.
Share your thoughts on this information.
Yeah.
Because we will, we will, we have to tell Desi how many seats we're putting in, but just if you have any thoughts, we're open to your thoughts.
What is the timeline for getting a good discussion then for you, if there's something that we are concerned with or need to ask clarification or something?
Well, we want to be able to start to optimize what we have available, people have been calling, other districts are actively in their school choice mode. So I would.
Well, are you basically recommending what's on the sheet?
So the blue column at the end is a collaborative, collaboration with the principals, those decisions, and looking, you know, kindergarten is a difficult one to try to plan for. It is a high-demand one, last year we had, uh, six applicants for kindergarten with two seats available. So having four seats, and then remember, a sibling, that would be most likely when you first hit a sibling. A sibling of a choice kid gets preference, so sometimes those seats could get eaten up pretty quickly just by the sibling part.
So, I guess I'm just curious in regard to the, the zeros in seventh and twelfth grade.
So there's a rather large sixth grade class moving up to the middle school. That's why, um, he didn't put any seats there, I don't know if he wants to address that. Because often it's one of our own kids that's got the glitch.
I mean, I, I would wonder why we don't have at least a couple.
About one hundred and forty-five students currently that are gonna be coming up in grade six to seven.
Yeah.
And then accounting for obviously, uh, new students moving into the district, which you're always gonna get, on average about half a dozen at least, uh, with the summertime to enroll in grade seven. We didn't, I don't feel that adding seats to that is gonna be doable to keep our class sizes where they need to be. And also, we built our master schedule, we'll run the first build of it from the middle and high school level in April of this year. And this is kind of where we make the determination of how many sections we're gonna run, how we assign their teaching responsibilities to our staff. Um, so oftentimes, what happens is if you have a big class and you get those choice seats in and move-ins, you can have a class that originally started out at sixteen that turns into twenty-seven, and that's a concern that we don't prefer that as far as class size as well.
And in twelfth grade, we've had seats there, and you're recommending none this time?
I recommend none, um, each year.
And we overmove every time?
Yeah, but, yeah, I might get overmoved, but, um, in regard to twelfth grade, it's difficult when a student comes from another district with certain background and credit accrual and things of that nature, so a lot of times you've got a kid that comes into our school with higher threshold or requirement for graduation regarding credits, what courses might have to be read off. And a lot of times people come in, they haven't had them, and they'll, they'll, they won't last you a year. Needing success, so it's just, that's a question that I'm concerned is kind of up in the, since it's happened, not sort of the time they've passed for you.
We can have attendance and dropout issues. And, and I think our worry, you know, we do have, we may have some of our own kids, we had a few this year because tuition waivers, we had three. I think that's what we'll have to do in three, two years as the markets do shift out, who want to stay and graduate with Mashpee, but they've been with us. So we had three, on, on top of the two choice seats, we did give free tuition waivers this year, but they, they were already with us.
All right, anyone else?
I have just a couple of questions. So, I'm, I had, I kind of folded my last column over, so I could just see what we're proposing for, what you've recommended for twenty next to what we did in nineteen, so I'm not really focused on what we filled, right? So just sort of what we advertised. I, I understand what you're saying, Mark, about grade seven, um, but seeing as that's like a point of entry into our system, uh, that big zero just, I don't know, sort of bugs me a little bit, but, um, all, it bugs me because we're gonna be spending, you know, more than a half a million dollars for our choice funds in that execution year budget, and we're adding, you know, like sixteen seats to our capacity. It just seems like, and I know that's not why we're using the choice funds, but, um, uh, so I think about that, the kindergarten and the seventh grade, I mean, it looks like we've tried to bring the seats up, I mean, the, I, I don't know. I just, I wish this, I think we have a lot of positive things happening in Mashpee, and I certainly don't want to jeopardize those, but I think, um, we could welcome more folks if we have the capacity. If we're gonna put a ceiling on how many kids we can have in our district, um, even as we spend all the choice funds that were allocated in a given year, uh, it just seems like this is tricky or something, I don't, it doesn't, I don't know.
I mean, it seems to me, you know, we had thirty-eight available, we, we filled twenty-six of those. And, you know, we had ten available in seventh grade, so, and I understand, you know, some of the challenges, you know, about the middle high school and the high school. I guess the fact that we're gonna advertise having ten in eighth grade, ten in ninth grade, um, and we currently have two, five in twelfth grade, five in, uh, eleventh grade, and we have one and two respectively, I guess I'm not sure we can advertise that. I, I, I guess I just don't.
Maybe you could go with the grade seven, given that's what happened this year, the large number in grade eight, the current seven is one. Kids to smaller grades.
Kind of eleven?
Kind of eleven, so. But I do think, I, I thought there was at least one, sometimes from sixth to seventh, it's our own kids that they moved out and they don't want to have to leave Mashpee, and we would have nothing.
That's what worries me, on the senior end too, is that.
Senior end, at least you know you're just gonna carry.
Do a waiver of the year, right, the waiver. I remember last year, similar activities, right, where we had a, did we add a class for first grade or kindergarten last year because it was a bigger?
We did the kindergarten. We did, we added a kindergarten because we were almost, uh, we went from sixth to seventh.
Right. Right, so, you know, I'm just thinking about this incoming seventh grade class, like, do we, do you, do we already have seven homerooms planned for that class, or?
Generally, that's what we, we look at, how many sections we can allocate, some staff, because we're gonna have to allocate staff from other grades down to seventh to accommodate that.
Right.
Again, we, we really strive to keep our class sizes reasonable, and when you get a class, you know, for a Temple Log junior class, uh, we had a number of kids come in unexpectedly in the fall of the school year. We had a class, an English class that was at sixteen to begin, that was up to thirty. And, um, that's, that's a number that, we, we remedied that, but we had to wait till the semester break to get our staffing opportunities, so I just want to make sure that we're keeping our class sizes where they're at, and that, you know, and I want to bring as many kids as we can into our district, but I also want to put the kids we currently have as well.
I, and I trust, you know, Principal Bell Stracci's recommendation, you know, highly, I think one of the issues too that we fall into is that the seventh grade class did not shrink at all this year and next year, so there's no real capacity build that we normally get. Plus, we have, and that includes, I'm sorry, three school, school choice seats, so I don't like zeros either. I'd love to be able to provide us with some kind of flexibility in case some strange situation comes out, but, um, unfortunately, sometimes I think it, that, you know, we don't want to ever run into the situation where we, um, kind of violate our, what we've set up as a philosophy for school choice and have to go hire a teacher to support school choice. If it, if it happens, it happens, that's what our floor is for. So, you know, we have built that in as flexibility too, so that's, that's my two cents. I guess we're just having a discussion, so I mean, it's, yeah, yeah.
So, generally as a committee, we'd like to see a few seats in grade seven, I'm getting that.
If possible. You know, it's, even if it's one or two, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, we'll see.
I think we, yeah, I think we should.
I'm sorry.
Perfect.
And if there's, if there's an opportunity to add more seats in kindergarten, I would be in favor of that too, even if it's just one or.
Do you know, Principal Bell, do you know what kindergarten, I know it's early, but registrations are looking like, is it the norm, low?
We have that elect, the college law. But, um, I'm expecting about that.
Do you expect to have seven in grade next year?
No, I don't expect that.
Is that, what do you have this year? Six, okay, so you made it, so that was the glitch here, they're moving up.
It doesn't follow the trend, but we had, uh.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have those at the public years.
I was looking at what I have to preschool this year, and.
So we, from seventeen to eighteen, you had twenty-two extra students, according to this piece of paperwork. From seventeen, we had, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at pre-k, uh, preschool, my apologies, so we had lost thirty-some kids, one hundred and twenty-two left. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. And so you went down a class.
Correct.
And. Right. Right, 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 okay. So our, that capacity is gone. Understood.
So, so the bulk of these, it looks like we added, it looks like sixteen seats over what, you're recommending right now sixteen seats over what we did this year. Not what we filled, but what we offered, and the bulk of those are in just eighth and ninth.
Well, I mean, you look at Coombs, that's pretty well doubled.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the substantial, I mean, Coombs is, yeah, okay, but it looks like.
I mean, I think ten seats in grades eight and nine is optimistic, I don't expect ten choice seats.
No, that's what I mean, so that's.
So that could give you false sense of.
But that's because of that, that class is so small, is so much smaller, we can kind of stretch it. I, I, I want to be clear, I am not, I don't want to do anything to like compromise the education for the kids that are in there, but I am just such a huge fan of the school system, and if people want to come here, I want them to come. And, and, you know, if our selectmen can figure out how to get more affordable housing in this town, I think we would have a lot more families taking advantage of our district. Um, I think that's our big challenge right now, and a lot of these people are, I just talked to a family this week who, you know, found the house they want in Falmouth, but they really want their kids to go to Mashpee, you know, and they're just, um, we just don't have the, the options here, yeah.
And it's an interesting kind of discussion that happens at least the last couple of years, and I expect that tomorrow at the meeting from the finance committee, they're gonna ask us why we don't have more school choice seats, why we don't just bring in as many kids as possible, you know, and I think it's really important to have this discussion, so we're all aligned, and I know the fifteen people that are watching are aligned with, um, what we do for school choice.
Do you think there's fifteen people?
I'm, I'm in a good mood today, I'm trying to be really positive. So I mean, it's, you know, something they say, that, you know, there's people that look at this as some kind of cash cow, but it's not, you know, we're trying to do the best thing for the school district, and I think we've done a really good job of publicly expressing why we're doing what we're doing. It's because we have a great school system and people want to come here, but we also don't want to, um, violate kind of the contract that we sign with the existing students, so.
Especially when we have to use a half a million dollars of choice funds to offset operating expenses.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think they realize that, you know, we're working with the marginal capacity.
Right.
And, you know, as Mr. Bell Stracci points out, whether I agree or don't agree, you know, adding one more seat in seventh grade could potentially cost us, um, a huge number because we'll have to hire a teacher and, you know, pay salary and benefits, and so that one additional person didn't bring the district anything. Actually costs the district, so.
That is the slippery slope that we had with school choice, that's for sure.
Um, can I ask why the number for eighth and ninth grade is the same? Both ten and ten? Just because, like, I remember last year, when, or two years ago, when I was talking to one of my friends, she was considering moving to another school, and we were talking about how moving in eighth grade would be better than moving in ninth grade because at least in eighth grade you can make a ton of friends so that you could go into high school with a solid friend group, rather than going in, in ninth grade and not really knowing anyone, and it's a whole new school. But I just remember that we had around twenty or thirty more kids in our grade last year, and then they all leave for Sturgis and Tech and other schools. So I was, and then not nearly as many people came in this year to even like try to counter that. So I was just wondering why the numbers are a lot higher for eighth and ninth grade when not a lot of people usually come in in ninth grade.
Ninth grade, that's a good point for, for school, and, um, eighth grade, high school, so a lot of kids come from a private school or another school study in eighth grade and come into high school, but it's really based on what we can absorb into the class sizes. So it's really kind of what the numbers are based off, and what the class, size of the class is, and then how many sections we have to have based on our staff.
But you also said it yourself, Skylar, so ninth grade, from eighth to ninth, is a year when some kids go to Cape Tech, some kids go to Sturgis, they might even go to Pope John Paul.
Yeah.
And so because, and we do everything we can to counter those kids, we don't want them to leave, but because when they leave, we do have more space available in grade nine, because of that access, which we would like to see.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
So we, we try to set up our choice so that we don't have to change anything, we can just absorb how, and so Principal Bell Stracci is recommending that those twenty kids we can absorb without changing, you know, our programming or adding staff or anything like that. And like Patty said, it's because kids leave for eighth, ninth, that we have that space, so.
And if anyone hasn't told you, we are so grateful you have stayed in Mashpee.
Yes, thank you, Skylar.
Go anywhere, we'll come and get you.
But your point is valid, I mean, it looks like anywhere roughly twenty kids drop off going from eighth to ninth grade.
Yeah, historically.
Historically, and so, you know, maybe ten.
Eight of them are at Cape Tech. In grade nine, so that's where.
We can also kind of, let's look at the silver lining here, so we're providing the opportunity for ten students to come to the best school district on Cape, so.
Exactly.
To be able to interact with the school.
Yeah.
Gets better than that.
So thank you for that awesome, robust discussion for school choice. The remainder of the packet is the upcoming dates for the school committee.
The only column I have here.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, the presentation, um, I don't, I think it's early, it's six-thirty, I was trying to find, yeah, find my email here.
I have it on six, six o'clock, yeah, yeah, and I will already be in the building, so it'll be awesome.
Just trying to find the email, but.
Which I would like to get on that distribution, I don't know how to do on that.
Who's going to NSBA?
I'm going.
You are?
I'm still debating, I don't, right now, I'm trying to figure out my schedule.
Are you, and you're going, George?
I, I can't this year, no.
I, I know Chris is going, I'm going too.
Cool, excellent, I'll make sure, but I'll tell you going, and so I know which one I have to go to.
Well, I told you. Well, if I told you.
Yeah, exactly.
Then everyone would know.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Moving on, yeah, exactly, sorry about that. And then we have the calendar, in case anybody's got any questions on the school calendar.
I'm looking through that, extra including that.
If there's no discussion on the calendar portions, there's any items that any of the other committee members would like to bring up that weren't anticipated for the agenda?
I have a thing on the calendar here, which said that the health advisory committee meeting was going to be on the 20th, it was today. We had a discussion about the artificial birth.
Oh, okay.
And all of that, and also about obesity. And the numbers are kind of surprising to me. Seventh grade, 41% of the students were either overweight or obese, 24% were obese, and in the 10th grade, it dropped to 35%, with 17% obese.
Is this our data or national?
This is our data.
Do they have national data?
Number of children to BMI all age.
This is, this is just for Mashpee?
I was told this was for Mashpee, I'm looking at this now, I'm great, yeah, it says grade seven.
I'd like those copies of that, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
It'd be interesting to see what the national data is as well.
Saying it?
Says 2018-19.
2018-19, so recent. In the fourth grade, I don't have the percentages here, but 19, oh, 19% in the fourth grade.
So Patty, can we find out what these numbers were last year, and then what the, what the state averages are? So we can have a little context? Because that sounds alarming to me, too.
Yeah. We had quite a discussion about it, and it seems that the bigger problems are down in the lower grades, down the Coombs school level, where there's no real activities going on, sports activities that are available at that, for that age group as they are once you start middle school, middle high school. And there's very little participation in the town in things like Little League or DAF. There was a discussion of how we might increase that.
Through town programs?
With, well, with possibly what we could do, it's a combination of the parents playing this thing called Fortnite with the kids or something like that, I mean, this, there was a big discussion about that.
Your parents are playing.
Yeah, parents were playing with their kids, and that's, that was a conversation on the third grade.
As a parent of a Fortnite player, I can assure you, no parent in my house is playing Fortnite, but I'm sure some do.
Yeah, there was.
I'm not sure we can attribute the obesity crisis to that.
Not entirely, but the thing was, is that everybody are doing more towards the always on the phone or always in the electronics and something like that, and not doing the physical activity, which is leading. And we do a good job, once kids get to the seventh grade, in working with them in the sports programs we have available, we don't really have anything available at the lower levels that might entice them.
Out of curiosity, who's on the health committee that's stating that we don't provide enough activity for the kids below seventh grade?
That was Matt.
Matt? Okay.
Matt.
Tavary.
Oh, Tavary.
Coach Tavary.
Well, so at the high school, I mean, they are, most of the kids are involved in sports, but they don't have the recess, the daily recess of 25 minutes, those kids are running around, and then they do have their PE class. There are after-school, athletically focused activities at Quash.
Yeah, this was more, I'm sorry, this was more focused on the Coombs age group.
Do you have a baseball, do you have a walking?
I think it's, it would be nice to have a.
Don't you have a walking club over there, or?
Be a good agenda, yeah.
Walking club, marathon people?
We have.
What do you have for physical activity for kids?
Yeah, we get, we get into like a nice wide discussion that we probably want to add to the agenda then.
We have the walking and wacking in the morning, which is a typical high school program where they walk with the school staff every night. And then we have, which is in school time, they'll marathon one day. We don't have any active, actual programs.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's where Matt seemed to think that the emphasis should be, like, we need emphasis there, that we can do something.
Well, I think, you know, when we.
It's a combination of the parents.
Can we invite Coach Tavary to provide us with some recommendations then?
Mm-hmm.
That's an hour request.
He and I talked earlier today about the volleyball program that we want to start, it's going to be a fifth and sixth grade startup for the fall, and we need to meet with Principal O'Brien, but it's one additional option.
Yeah, I think, I just wanted to correct just something that you said. I mean, I think when Mark and I, when he gave me the numbers for student athletes at the middle high school, it's something like one in three. It's not, it's not the majority of our students, it's roughly a third. So I don't think you can attribute our athletic programs to a decline in obesity at that age level necessarily. Does that make sense?
That's true, yeah.
There's a lot of variables.
Yeah, there's a lot, so, but I think it would be great, as Jeff said, to have a discussion of this, because I, I'm really supportive of trying to, as I'm sure everybody is, trying to figure out, you know, how to keep our kids more active throughout the year, short of going to year-round school.
I think we could get processed foods out of their stomachs, but you got a lot.
All right, any other short, brief topics that we need to discuss for the reason that we know in advance?
Can I have that report, go, so we can get it from Stacy?
What you got, Don?
I was just going to ask, when we talk about that at the, I guess, next meeting or whenever, I would appreciate some understanding of how they made that assessment.
Yeah, we'll have them come.
You know, was it a drive-by evaluation, or?
No, those were actual measurements of the fourth grade, the 10th grade, and the seventh grade body mass index.
So they were calculating the BMI?
Yeah.
They have to do that by law.
That's by law, they have to do it, those are the grades they have to do it, and those were the percentages we were arriving at.
And that's based upon?
Out of 110, I believe, in the fourth grade, no, 118 in the fourth grade, 17, 27, 28, 38, 40 were either overweight or obese.
That's based upon the national standard?
No, that was our school.
On what BMI is, so.
Right.
24 and above is obese, or something like that.
Yeah.
Right, which is, which is the nationals.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
We will discuss that at a later date on the agenda.
In the previous.
August 14.
That means that the comparisons to previous years are a different cohort of kids, because it's always in grade four, always in grade seven, okay.
They had some that went from grade to grade, but they didn't have that information with them. That was a question that was asked, but those were just the tests that were done this year and what the ratings were.
All right. So the next item on the, I'm sorry, Skylar?
Can I add something?
Of course you can.
So also, for the Casey Coombs level, they don't have the sports after school, but rec soccer. I know that a lot of students in that younger age play, play sports with the rec, whether it's rec basketball, or rec soccer, or rec indoor soccer. So I think that, I don't know how much, if that like influences anything at all, but it's just something to remember that even if Casey Coombs doesn't have Casey Coombs teams, their, their students are still playing sports outside of it on Mashpee teams.
So getting the information from the rec department as to participation at each of the grade levels, whatever they have to ask.
Because I'm not trying to minimize this topic at all, I'm just trying to move it to a place, a time when we can actually discuss it fully.
You have time, because you're chairing the meeting.
That has nothing to do with it.
And your whole family is watching.
Yeah, exactly.
Don and George told me the board, they tried to run it over, just to mess with you, but.
So the next item.
He has one left to finish.
Yeah, so the next item on the agenda is public comment, I don't see any public comment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Right, move to adjourn by George, second by Don, all in favor?
Aye.
Just want to keep them on schedule.
Meeting adjourned.